Okay. Welcome to the special meeting for January 28th. I will be taking roll call. Alexandra.
Here.
Amal.
Here.
Daria.
Here.
Griselda. Griselda is not here. Sophia Martin. Serena.
Here.
Veronica.
Here.
Laili.
Here.
Lisa. Lisa. Here or not here?
She's here.
She's here.
Okay. Patrice.
Here.
Tayu.
Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
Bruce.
Here.
Okay, great.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming on such short notice. I really, oh, Griselda. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello, Griselda. I just want to have you on the roll call. So can you say here?
Here.
Okay. Thank you.
So, welcome again, and thank you, everyone, for joining on short notice. Hopefully, you saw my email announcement about the purpose of this evening's meeting. I'm gonna recap, and then we'll just get into it and also hear from the public. So, in short, let's just recap some of the events, and I'm not sure if Noah Mohan is on the line, but I think everybody is aware of the Swastika stickers event, horrific event that took place before the end of the year. It was captured on video. Heroically, resident young man Noah Mohan confronted the perpetrator who was posting these "We Are Everywhere" Swastika stickers on both public property and private property. And if you haven't seen this video, it's pretty accessible. We can get that to you. Lori Fragoli, the county DA. I sent the press release in early January. She issued a press release that she is not pressing charges. And there's been quite a bit of reaction related to that part of what she has shared is that she didn't have enough evidence. And I think that has been particularly from my conversations with some of the community members that has been particularly frustrating and painful to hear, given that the whole episode was captured on video. And so lots of reactions from the community. There is a petition that's circulating. It has over 700 signatures. There's been small community forums that I have, and Renee has been participating in on how to respond to this. And Lori, the DA, has had in her mind for some time, she has developed a partnership with Not in Our Town in Nevada. And she's had this event, this community conversation in her mind and development for several months. And then when this took place, she thought she wanted to accelerate the timing for obvious reasons. And so Renee's been in discussion with her about that. And it made sense to bring in our committee, the Racial Equity Social Justice Committee, to hear from this committee and pull in the community. What? How do we want to engage? What do we, like, all the things that I put in the email? Do we want a formal statement? Do we, and I've talked directly to Lori about this. You know, I hear very loudly and clear that it's, the level of transparency has not been acceptable to the public. That said, I don't know, and I don't believe that she's going to provide any more details about her decision-making process. And that shouldn't hold you or anyone listening from demanding that or asking that. But I don't know that we should expect any more details about her decision-making process from this community conversation. And I can share more about what the format is going to be for this event, and then I definitely want to stop talking and hear from the group. But I have suggested to Lori that in my role as a council member, you know, I want to know what I can do so that we're never in this situation again, because I do feel like we will be in this situation again, just knowing the escalation of events all over the country. And we did have an incident on Glen Drive a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if you know about that, but I'm happy to, not happy, but I will share the details around that event. There was a hate note left on a woman's car, a Jewish woman's car. So I think, or I would like to discuss the notion of a hate crime local ordinance so that she, the DA, you know, has something to work with and can't say, you know, whether it's public or private property, you can't do that here, and we will press charges. So, and we have a subcommittee now that's town policy, and we could certainly pursue that. So I'm just going to shift and tell you a little bit about the format of this event. So there's going to be a panel of speakers, and that will be comprised of Lori Fragoli herself, and then there's Patrice O'Neil from Not in Our Town. There's Seth Brisk, who's regional director of the ADL. And then there's Susan Leader, who's a rabbi from the temple in Tiburon. Cole Shafar and Noah Griffin Mohan, who's, I think he's kind of a local hero. I think everyone knows who he is. So he'll be on the panel. And then Veronica, are you planning to as well? Great. And then we have Morgan Bloom Schneider, who's the director of Jewish Family and Children's Services Holocaust Center. So that is the lineup, if you will, of panelists. And they are asking for questions in advance. And they're also planning to take Q and A, you know, live Q and A. And I believe the event will be an hour and a half. And they're expecting input and feedback subsequent to this, tonight's discussion from Fairfax Res J. So with that, I'm just going to open it up to the committee, and then we're going to pivot to the public. And then we can pivot back to the committee for some sort of action items and what we want to point back to the DA and the panel. Does that sound good? Okay. So I'm here to listen.
I have a question.
Yes.
Who is the "they" who is expecting input from Res J?
Lori is really spearheading this event. It's not sponsored by the town of Fairfax. We are just influencing, if you will. And she's, I mean, to her credit, she is soliciting feedback. Veronica?
Yeah, I just wanted to share too, thank you, Stephanie, for calling us to this meeting and making sure that we all wrap around this with intention and clarity on behalf of Res J. It feels like a wonderful here we go opportunity to jump right into our work. But I just wanted to also share on behalf, I've mentioned before that I'm involved with Serge Marin, and just wanted to convey that Serge Marin also wrote a letter to Lori Fragoli expressing on behalf of Jewish community members within Fairfax who are also on Serge Marin, some who are within Serge Marin, the disappointment of not pressing charges and the harm that that causes, not just our Jewish community members, but acknowledging that the white supremacist heritage of the Swastika impacting all community members of color as well, who feel threatened or intimidated by that. So just wanted to name that we wrote a letter and gave it to her last week, expressing a concern around having a conversation like this. Grateful to be able to open, feeling grateful that she's taking that step to hear community input, and also feeling concerned around accountability and wanting there to be more accountability for the perpetrator. And in what way there might be a sense of the conversation on Tuesday, feeling a little bit more performative than really substantially restorative. And the last thing I'll mention, just to keep these wheels in our, adding to the spaghetti on the wall of what we can think of as we go into Tuesday. The awareness that these types of conversations opening up on Tuesday, and even this one that we're having now, can create more harm sometimes. And to just ask how we might help frame that conversation on Tuesday or help approach it in a way that keeps our community members from having, who already are feeling threatened and unsafe and harmed, to make sure that they feel more protected coming out of that exchange and what ways that could happen. And I'm eager to hear from all of you, for those of you who are Jewish and who do feel for other reasons threatened by that or harmed by what happened, what ways we can try to hold that best?
Patrice, thank you, Veronica.
Um, so I'm actually Jewish. And I was incredibly offended by the gentleman putting up, I shouldn't even call him a gentleman, by the guy putting up Swastika stickers. I'm also friends with Noah Mohan. I think that we should definitely respond with our opinion of how offensive this was. But I think that we have to, as a community, start to walk the walk, so to speak. I've lived here for almost three years now, and every holiday, we only celebrate Christmas. There's only red and green around town. There's no blue and white. There's no acknowledgement of Kwanzaa. There's no acknowledgement of inclusiveness. And so I've been sitting with this, Stephanie, since your email came out. And I don't think that we can change the world because of this one incident, but we can certainly create some values for Fairfax. I know that Fairfax is an age-friendly community, but why can't Fairfax be an anti-racist community and have some values under that that we can then uphold? And Stephanie, I love your idea about a local hate crime ordinance, as long as we don't tread against the First Amendment. Because I, I feel that there's someone out there who's going to be offended by everything, not diminishing this activity at all. But let's say I put up a Black Lives Matter sticker. Someone could be offended by that, and that becomes a hate crime. So I think that we need to be very cautious in how we approach this ungodly situation.
Yeah, thank you. You're absolutely right. And I think part of the opening remarks that will be shared among the panelists is contextualizing what's happening on a national basis, like Fairfax is so not alone in this experience, and how the first, and unfortunately, the Second Amendment get in the way of prosecuting. And so what I'm asking for, if this local ordinance is something that we want to pursue, is Lori's allyship in pursuing it. If she if she, you know, I really, I really want to hear from her, you know, how how we take action to keep our community safe from here on. Yes, we should tell her if we're disappointed. Yes, we should share our pain and get it out on the table, but I really want to be, have it be a productive discussion about where we move from here as well. And that's me personally. Anyone else want to speak? Alexandra?
Um, yeah, I have a lot of thoughts and feelings also as someone who is Jewish as well. But first, I was wondering if I could ask if anybody on that panel is a person of color?
Um, that's a great question. I haven't, I literally, I don't know. I don't know the question. I could get back to you on that, but I just don't know.
So Alexandra, I don't know the answer to that either, but I do know that Noah Mohan is Jewish.
Well, yeah, no, I know him too. I went to high school with him, but
Got it.
And it's clear that there are Jewish representation on this panel. I was just wondering if there was also people of color. I think that this affects a lot of marginalized communities. I don't, I think, of course, it's an antisemitic act, but that symbol represents a lot of hate for a lot of groups. And so I think that's important, and I think it makes a lot of people feel unsafe in our community. So, um, I guess I just think that I'm feeling very conflicted about this. I think for sure we should put out a statement or something like that. I don't think we should not do anything. But I am feeling like a lot of the things that are going on right now are performative, and we are being used, I guess, to be a part of that. And I don't feel great about that at this moment.
When you say "we," what, can you expand on that? We Res J or we?
Sorry, the, as the Res J, as this group that is, that was created with the intent to be diverse. I just feel like at this moment, I feel like it's, we are being, the Res J is being used as a tool to say, look at what I'm doing versus, don't look at what I didn't do. I just think that to have a meeting about what we can do to move forward and what we can do in the future to prevent things like this from happening that is led by the one, by a person who has the power to do something to stop these things is kind of, it doesn't sit well with me, but that's my opinion. That's only my opinion. I don't want to speak for anyone else on this committee. But, um, yeah, so I'm interested to hear what you all think, but that's where I am right now and how I'm feeling.
So, but as far as anything that you would like funnel to them, I did hear we should craft a statement.
Yeah, I don't think that we should not take the opportunity to use our voice. I'm just expressing my conflicting feelings about this situation.
Yeah, I hear that. I mean,
Her hand raised.
Yeah, I'm gonna call on Lizel, because we've heard from Veronica. Go ahead.
Actually, I'd say, go ahead and talk to Laili first, because I want to hear a few other voices before I say anything. So yeah.
Well, and in that moment, I kind of forgot what I was going to say. I just, I think that we all can empathize with our own feelings that this is all, that there's a very performative element here. But I think that there's also a real desire, I think, for something restorative to happen. And I just, I see us as possibly being able to go on multiple pathways here. You know, one is, in our statement, we could make that, you know, make that request or even make a, suggest a plan. Thinking a little bit more broadly for maybe future incidents, I wonder what people think about the idea of more kind of a coalition. I mean, like Serge Marin has a letter. In my mind, ideally, there would have been a letter that went out that we were all signatories to, that we worked on together so that we speak with one voice to the extent possible. And I'll stop there. I, one thing, I think, Patrice, to your point about your First Amendment concerns, I mean, I've spent most of my working life on the defense side of the criminal law, but I don't have those concerns, at least to the extent that you articulated about the hate crime or hate incidents. I think that there's, those have been out there for a while now, and for the most part, it functions pretty well. So I think that, you know, that's a great consideration to have in mind if we get to be part of crafting an ordinance. But I think that it'll be pretty easy to keep you out of jail with your Black Lives Matter banner, no matter what somebody might say about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lizel, are you ready?
Yeah, sure. So I guess, you know, I really thought about this, and I have to say, in some ways, I really liked what, I liked what everybody had to say, but I liked what Alexandra had to say about, you know, a little bit of like, look at what I'm doing rather than what I'm not doing. I had two responses to this. So first off, I'm just going to say I am gay. I come from a family that's half Jewish. And I'm really aware that other people were targeted by the Nazis, including gays and gypsies and lots of other people, although the Jews bore the brunt of it. And it really offends me that "We Are Everywhere" was a gay slogan. It was supposed to be about coming out and realizing that there were gay people everywhere. So that's another layer of offendedness. And in some ways, when this first happened, I think my response was, well, this is like really bad and ugly. But I'm worried about people responding to it like, oh, this really bad person from outside came in and did this obviously overtly racist thing, and we're all going to focus on getting that person and then feel good about ourselves and not work on anything else. And I don't mean that about the Res J, but I'm like, I just want to keep that track about when we respond that, yeah, this is an overt statement that's very bad, and we want to crack down, but we're not stopping there and just saying, we're really virtuous, like everybody in Fairfax said, this is yucky. And then we, you know, get diverted from doing the other necessary work. I think that the Boilinas also had stickers placed about a week later, so we weren't the only community, at least according to a friend of mine. And I am really curious about, I mean, I think after what happened on January 6th, I did think more about like, yeah, we need to just really keep cracking down on this stuff though, too, because it's a growing movement. So I do think we should have a statement. And I also received a letter from someone that I can't find right now, and I don't know if this should be part of our ask, but that there were other possible ordinances or, I don't know what you call them, laws under which this person could be charged, and I'm not sure if anybody knows about those. But those are just some, some random thoughts about crafting a statement. And I do like the idea of a local ordinance.
Thank you. Serena?
Um, I guess I just have like a couple clarifying questions about the ordinance, if that is like the route we decided to go on. And this may be dumb, but, um, if we went with the ordinance and like, the town like pressed charges for incidences like this, would that be like a type of restorative justice situation? Or would that be like fines or? And then also, I guess I was wondering how it would apply to like local schools? And that's about it. But I think, is that something we can decide, or is that something that just kind of gets decided for us?
I think, I mean, I just don't even, I don't feel comfortable answering because I'm not an attorney, but I think one already exists for schools. They hate, there's a hate crime California code that already exists. But yeah, we could craft it however we want. Where did you go? I can't see you. But I don't totally feel comfortable answering because I'm not an attorney. But I will tell you that, and I think I already said this, that Lori supported that as a path for us. And I really want to hold her to that in terms of working with us and our city attorney, if that's what we decide we want to do.
Yeah, it's fine. You can answer that. Um, I guess I'll just add on to that, like if we decide to go like the restorative justice path, I would hope it wouldn't be performative.
Meaning you would want restorative justice?
Yeah, but I wouldn't want it to be performative restorative justice.
I don't know what that is. I don't know what performative restorative justice is.
Just like not really helpful, like basic, maybe like basic diversity training as a response would maybe not, you know, help the person at all or help the community at all.
Okay. I mean, I think we have some really good programs in Marin, don't we? Like, I know Don Carney's anyway. I'm familiar with Don Carney's. It's phenomenal. Anyway, okay. I don't know who you're pointing to. Daria?
Hi. Yeah, everyone has said some really important things. I, I I'm very interested in hearing from Lori about her decision-making. And, you know, so you mentioned lack of transparency. I'm not sure what you're referring to, but that would be huge for me, is, you know, what is your thinking? I also think we should be mindful of the consequences of prosecution and whether we want to engage this person in the criminal justice system. I think that's part of what we are trying to avoid unless it's clearly the right thing to do. And so I think that's important to think about, and I'm also interested in the restorative justice. I mean, we have to find a way to fundamentally prevent this kind of hatred and address that. It's, otherwise it's going to be whack-a-mole. So those are the things that are uppermost on my mind, how we prevent. And really, this is important, you know, how do we respond?
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Amal? There you go.
I just see Veronica's. Is Amal's up there? What was that?
Did you want to speak, Amal?
Yeah. Yes. I was just going to say something that comes to mind in the interest of solidarity and creating more strength in pretty much everything we do is also recognizing that symbol scares a lot of people. So as a Muslim family, we were really shaken by that. My friend who lives here with her wife and her two daughters felt terrified as a gay family. It struck them. My childhood friend who grew up here and is African-American and a female that lives alone felt very scared. So I think when we recognize the full power of that symbol, it brings in a lot more voices to speak about this and creates a lot of unity that I think we need in social justice. Also, I was, something that keeps coming to mind, and I don't actually know how this would play out in this situation. But one thing that I really think is beautiful is some of the great voices of this movement are really talking about calling in rather than calling out and punishing, that it's kind of exacerbating stuff. Who knows if this guy made a mistake earlier and was so heavily called out for it?
Who knows if this guy made a mistake earlier and was so heavily called out for it that it pushed him farther? So I, again, I don't know how that would work with this, but I really think opening discussions and trying to pull people into you know, justice and social justice and not react with the same kind of vengeance that these kind of actions are fueled by. But something that is restorative, restorative justice, because to me, I even get scared, like, I was even scared when that video came out and all, everything went around, I felt like, oh my God, this is gonna have a backlash. Like, like some crew is gonna come into Fairfax, and I felt like nervous about that. So to me, like, I keep thinking about what would be the solution that would be most lasting, that would create not like, you know, of course, personally, like, you wanna see actual justice happen, but also I think about like when my kids are older and how do I want Fairfax and everything to be long-term, something more sustaining? So I, I keep going back and forth in my mind, and again, I have no idea how that would look, but those are my thoughts right now.
Thank you. Okay, Veronica, you wanna speak?
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted, Alexandra, I loved your question, and I'm curious if, Stephanie, if you can find out if there are any folks of color, and if not, if me, if you'd be willing to, to join Alexandra. Because I think that's very important, that a person of color is represented at least one, one in that conversation. And then in terms of restorative justice, it helps me, because the term is spoken a lot, the phrase is spoken a lot, to remember that it's about perpetrator-victim restoration. And so including the perpetrator if I'm understanding restorative justice correctly, and having some form of accountability with him would feel much more, and my heart's beating fast as I think about actually engaging with him, but, you know, knowing that that, that can be done with professionals, and we have in Marin County, a really incredible restorative justice program that Cindy Ayala heads and could be a part of. And what's interesting is, you know, speaking, Daria, to bringing in criminal justice and being hesitant, rightfully so. In order to access the restorative justice program within Marin County, you have to get referred by the district attorney's office after they've charged you. So there's a sense of if Lori Fergoli would have pressed charges, she could have welcomed him into a restorative justice program that is facilitated professional with our community members, and that feels like a really huge missed opportunity and could be part of our ordinance request is if you get, if you get charged with a hate crime, that then this is what's expected, that you will be a part of this, and what does the, what does the accountability look like would be dependent, of course, on every situation. Yeah, that's all that I wanted to say.
Before I call on you, Bruce, Alexandra, are you open to being a panelist before? Before, before we've all told you, or is that something?
Um, yeah, I would be open to it. I would just wanna be clear on if I was just representing myself, I wouldn't want to misrepresent our Res J, but yeah, I would be interested.
Okay, thank you. Bruce?
I really appreciate all these thoughts and agree with them all, and I just wanted to say that from my viewpoint, I, I agree that we should try as a town to work, or maybe with the county, as a county level, maybe with other towns, to try to address whatever gap in the legal code might have made this not something that the DA could prosecute. So it's really important for me to hear from the DA what, as, as has been said, what is the thought pattern? Not so much because I'm angry at the DA, but because I wanna know how we can make it better. So that specific question of, you know, not only why did you not prosecute, but what, what do you need going forward so that these things? And I, I love what was just said about that the opportunity could have been not necessarily to just punish this person, because I think we, we probably are all, we probably all heard that that this person had mental health issues. I would almost say by definition, they had mental health issues, that they're spewing that kind of hatred, but is that part of the thinking, and is there a reason why that sort of exempts someone from going into a restorative justice program? And that's exactly where it's needed. So what is the, what's the problem here? What was, that's just really top on my mind of getting that clear, what's the problem and what could be done to improve it in the future? Thank you all.
Sorry, I have my notes up, up. Daria?
I just wanted to comment that it's tricky to get into the mental health issue. I think that the mental health issue doesn't preclude that he should be held accountable for his behavior, and, and lots of people commit crimes like this who don't have mental, mental health problems. So, but I, I understand you're wanting to be fully informed about what brings him to this point, and and, and I'm curious about that, too, and I'm also interested in, you know, I feel that we should keep in mind, we need to consider what it would be to an offender to be charged and to carry this charge going forward in their lives, and to be very careful about doing that, to be very clear that that's the right action.
And I just wanna clarify that the mental health piece was never confirmed. That was not disclosed. That was something that sort of was out there, but so Bruce, I, I don't know that.
But, but I'm sorry.
Again, I'd like
Honestly, I don't know what it's, how it's really relevant, so we can move on.
I can say why it might be relevant. I mean, if, just in the way any person of color or anybody who's been harmed in the past may be traumatized by that, it will affect their behavior.
That they're traumatized by what?
Who knows what? By having lived through the Holocaust, having lost a family member to murder.
You're saying that's the cause of the mental illness?
No, I'm saying that those traumatic events do affect people. We know that trauma changes the brain. That's why we wanna be trauma-informed about all our people of color in this town, so that we can consider what they've been through before we judge their behavior.
Thank you, Daria. And the reason that I brought it up was because I'm interested in, as I said, what was the process by which this person couldn't be either charged or put into a restorative justice situation? And that's part, might be part of the question. I don't know whether it was, but that's why I brought it up. That's all. I think it is relevant.
And, and I, I just wanna make a statement right here, because I feel it's really important. I'm, I'm feel like we're we need to be able to say whatever we think here without feeling judged by it. And if I say something that, you know, you may think is stupid and irrelevant, I still have the right to say it. And I wanna be heard and not felt demeaned or diminished by saying whatever it is.
No, I, I don't think anything you just said was, I meant a hundred What I am reacting to is Lori has been very clear in my conversations that she is not going to reveal any more than she already has. And mental health is not part of the equation. When I asked her, she wouldn't respond to that. So whether it is, I mean, it's, it's relevant in terms of how, if, if she were gonna press charges, then what the consequences would be? That's how it's relevant, but I don't think it's relevant right now to our discussion in terms of our pain around the event, in terms of how frustrated people are with her lack of transparency. That's what I meant when I said I don't think it's relevant. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes perfect sense to me. I, I was just feeling like Bruce was getting a little bit of a hard time for bringing that issue up.
And I, I understand, Stephanie, that, and thanks for the information, that Lori might have made it very clear that she's not gonna say anything more. And I think I can understand that because the DA probably can't disclose their, the internal details of a, of a process.
Facts versus rumor, you know, like, we have to stick with what the facts are here, right?
The point that, that I was trying to make, and we'll just say again, is that what I would really like to see is any guidance that, I'm sorry, my phone's ringing, it'll go away. Any guidance that we can get as a town and as a committee making recommendations to the town as to what we can do going forward. If we're gonna consider an ordinance, what might that ordinance look like? From the DA's point of view, what did she find missing? In terms of, as, as Veronica said, this opportunity that was before us to have this person enter into a restorative justice situation, we think that would have been a good outcome. That outcome didn't happen. Is there anything we can do as a town to make it to where the next time something like this might happen, that that outcome can happen? And so that's, that's the question. And however, that fits together within the DA's thinking, and however, the DA might be able to answer that question without giving away stuff that they shouldn't give away as far as this case, but that's the question that I would have. Where do we go with an ordinance? That's it. Thanks.
One thing that, you said my name, right?
Yeah.
One thing that comes to mind for me in terms of, and I don't know what all the laws are about what constitutes a hate crime, but what is a little frustrating is what, from what you read on the news and what you see and what you experience yourself, it's kind of a too late kind of, it's like, it's, if you're actually physically attacked, right? So when I had that experience in the forest, I was threatened by, I don't know how many people threatened with their dog, very clearly a hate crime, but they didn't actually attack me. When I got out of the forest, I was gonna call the police, and it wasn't worth it to me to put myself in danger of having done that, knowing they would recognize me somewhere else because I knew nothing would happen, because I didn't get physically attacked. I knew they would get a warning or something. So I, to me, I think there is something, and that's maybe something we need to address as a committee, and I think hate crime is kind of like, it, it's only, there's no preventative process, right? It's only an actual hate crime once it's too late, right? Maybe that is part of the process. I don't know. I don't know, but when Bruce is asking why, why did she not, it might, that might be part of it, is that in order to constitute a hate crime, someone actually has to be hurt physically, which to me is, you know, that, that doesn't prevent much from happening.
Okay, I'm gonna give us like maybe ten more minutes, and then I wanna hear from the public. Go ahead, Daria.
I, I just wanted to say that I have the definition of a hate crime here, if you wanna hear it.
Sure.
Okay, according to California state law, hate crime charges may be filed when there is evidence that bias, hatred, or prejudice based on the victim's real or perceived race, ethnicity, religion, ancestry, national origin, disability, gender, or sexual orientation is a substantial factor in the commission of the offense. And I just wanna add, I don't know if you're aware that, but we have in Fairfax, Fred Persley, who is a fantastic organizer and accomplished individual, he coined the phrase hate crime. And I'm sure would have a lot to say about it if we asked him.
Wow, thank you.
Yeah, he's a really cool guy.
Griselda?
Yeah. I just wanted to, to speak to something that Daria said respectfully. You said that it's important that we are trauma-informed for all the people of color in Fairfax, and I would say that it's important to be trauma-informed for all the people. Because there, being brown doesn't necessarily mean that you're traumatized. And so I, you know, just wanted to point that out, and and also that, you know, I just love everyone. I just totally blown away by everyone, and just, thank you.
Yeah. Hand up a while, Stephanie, I don't know if you've seen it.
All right, I have an app up that's kinda covering, oh, I'm sorry, Patrice?
Um, I know that the special meeting was called because of the incident regarding the swastika stickers, but I just wanna make sure that we're doing our jobs as a racial equity and social justice committee and being proactive and almost developing an umbrella that protects more than just what happened with Noah and the swastika stickers. But beyond that, because this community isn't anti-racist, we're nowhere near. I was shaken to my core a year ago by wearing Hanukkah socks and having someone come up to me and tell me that I was flaunting my Judaism. I've never been more scared in my life. I've also had a dead crow put on my doorstep. I think that we need to become a truly anti-racist community with consequences for these things, but not just focus on this one incident, because it's not isolated, it happens every day. And that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, I see Daria. Is there anyone else? Then raising, okay.
I, I just wanna quickly respond by saying, Griselda, that I'm well aware that trauma is an equal opportunity experience. And I have trauma, I'm sure you have trauma, and, and that's really, that's part of being trauma-informed is really realizing that more likely than not, the person that you're speaking to, no matter what color they are, has experienced trauma. So I, I just wanna be clear about that.
Shall we go to the public?
Yeah, I think it's a good time.
Yeah, can I just check in with you for a second? I'm unclear of if you can see the
I can, I can see Elias and Ricky A, and they're all sort of lined up there.
Okay, so you can see it.
Yeah, but I don't know, you have the enabling capability, right?
Right, so, um, I, if, if you want me to go ahead and call and do this part, I will. Is that?
Yeah, you wanna just do it in the order they're shown there?
Yeah.
Elias, then Ricky A.
Elias, so you're ready to go, okay? Oh, and just before we start this part, we'll have three minutes tops that each person speaks. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, Elias.
Hi, how's it going? This is my first time in one of these meetings, so it's, it's cool to see you guys all here. I just, I wanted to bring up two things. The first was, was on the topic of this meeting, but before I say that, I just wanted to say thanks to Serena for bringing up the issue of performative.
Restorative justice.
Restorative justice, yeah. I think I think it it is something that's really going on and just from talking to people about Don Carney's organization, a lot of what I hear from other people who work in restorative justice practices is that they see Don Carney's organization as a recapitulation of the criminal justice system where white students adjudicate and pass judgment on students of color who come through that program. So I would, I would strongly recommend that you guys reach out to other people doing doing that kind of work. And actually, I have heard that people stay away from the the word restorative justice and use the word restorative practices just to differentiate themselves from Don's group. And so that's coming from people of color in Marin County. And then I just want to go on to my comment now about. So I I I want to say that I think what Noah Mo hand did was really commendable. You know, he he approached this this guy who was committing a hate crime in Fairfax and you know, had a very nonviolent approach and and remained calm and really did something that I think we should all be be thankful to him for. I am a bit concerned when I hear that Fairfax's racial equity and social justice committee is speaking about working with ADL. And so I just want to read briefly an excerpt from from Wikipedia about about what other social justice organizations think about the ADL. So in August 2020, a coalition of progressive organizations launched the hashtag drop the ADL campaign, arguing that the ADL is not an ally in social justice work. The campaign consisted of an open letter and a website, which were shared on social media with a hashtag drop the ADL. Notable signatories included the Democratic Socialists of America, the Movement for Black Lives, Jewish Voice for Peace, the Center for Constitutional Rights, and the Council on American Islamic Relations. So these are all organizations that condemn the ADL. And I I hope that you guys think about that as a social justice organization. It's really important that you consider the impact of, you know, who you work with. You know, obviously, hate crimes against the Jewish community in Marin County are absolutely abhorrent. But I I I think that that it would be worth looking into, you know, who the ADL is and what they represent and that they are.
Three minutes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick, Ricky A., go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, committee. I have a few comments. I'm hoping there's been a lot of really wonderful things said and I'm going to try to respond to. I hope I remember everybody. And one thing I just wanted to say about, because I've tuned in on your committee before and I really, really, really appreciate the the concerted sensitivity and sophistication with how you all express yourselves and the sensitivity you have about the words that you use. And I really appreciate that about you. And you're all very impressive as a committee and how you interact with each other. I know that this meeting, I guess, came about to decide what, if anything, you want to do in terms of this meeting that's coming up next week. And I thought that Alexandra made a really, really good point about, you know, is it just, you know, on display and, you know, is it really, is there really something there or not? But what happens, though, is and I'm not, I'm not sure this is the right answer. It's just a comment for you all to think about. But, you know, if you don't end up sort of showing up or participating in some way, you just make a statement or send something, then you also lose the opportunity to be in the dialogue, you know, and to be sort of present and and to, you know, and as a new committee, you know, you're all just getting new exposure. And so it's a chance for you to be available. And you don't have to agree to anything or lie with any of the other people that show up there to be yourselves. But point well taken and what Alexandra said, you know, you sort of not focusing on what didn't happen. The word transparency's come up a lot. I mean, I think many people in the community are just concerned. Not so much that anybody's out for blood as much as like it feels like there the word accountability, consequences, these things have come up. And and so that that's, I think, something that's troubling for for a lot of us and and the ordinance thing has come up. And that's really interesting. And at first I was attracted to the idea, you know, like, well, let's have our own thing. And maybe there's something that could be worked with in the future. But Patrice made that really good point early on about what are we setting ourselves up for? Because as I'm watching the national stage right now in the moment, I'm seeing new lingo, you know, domestic terrorism is now becoming a new phrase and, you know, everybody thinks it's all about the thing that happened at the Capitol with Proud Boys and Oath Keepers and and neo Nazis. But very, very quickly, that could be turned on all the other real people, social movements that are going on. And suddenly there's like another way to just spy, you know, more COINTELPRO times the power of 10 or whatever. And so I do think we need to be careful. You know, how, you know, is these, you're all, you're having the right conversation. You're asking all the right questions and how to how to think about this and and I think it was Amal who talked about the difference between hate speech and intimidation versus the actual crime and her concern about, you know, not maybe it didn't rise to the level of a crime and then what would be the backlash on her? I mean, when she first shared that story a while back, I mean, that really, really disturbed me. And so there there are a lot of issues here in Marin, you know, and and there's uncomfortable stuff. And I'm glad you guys exist and you're thinking about it all in the right way. And the last thing I would throw out, this isn't really directly for your decision about what to do about this meeting next week and how to represent yourselves. But and I've shared this with one or two people already, but, you know, one of my reactions early on after the whole video of Noah's got around and everybody became aware of this.
Three minutes. I'm sorry, I have to go to the next person.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll share this idea in writing somewhere else. And it'll be passed to the rest of you at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Sandy, go ahead. You're, you can unmute yourself. Sandy.
Hi. Hi. I wanted to, I think that the work that you're doing, I'm really impressed with the discussion tonight. And but I I wanted to say a couple of things. One is that I think the two things that we're talking about are equally important. The particular case that happened and holding this young man accountable. And I am a believer in restorative justice. And and the second thing is what we do for the future. But I don't think that either one of those things should supersede the other. I think they are equally important to me as a Jew and also as a member of Jewish Voice for Peace. So I appreciate what Elias is saying about ADL. Now I forgot what I was going to say. That was a complicated sentence. Damn. Stop the clock.
Said you wanted to hold the man accountable. And what do we do for the future?
Yeah. So I really want to hear from from the district attorney why she could not press charges and why she didn't press charges. I called Anna Pletcher and asked for her input on this. And she talked about diversion, the possibility for diversion and how that works and and restorative justice. Personally, I I really want to hold this young man accountable. And I do not, I think that a lot more change would happen, positive change would happen with him if he has to face the people he harmed and listen to us rather than being thrown in jail. I'm really clear about that. But so I I I want us to push Lori Fregoli. There are a lot of possibilities of reasons. If she thinks that she couldn't win the case, she might not press charges. If she thinks that, I've read the code, the California code on hate crimes. And I suspect that one of the problems might be that the person has to have an intention to terrorize a particular individual, which is why it's important that Mike Perry didn't press charges. Whether he was asked by the police to press charges against for vandalism or for a hate crime, I don't know. And I think that he does not remember. But we need to ask him and we need to ask Lori Fregoli exactly what her thinking is and not let her get away with this with not telling us.
Thank you. You're right at three minutes. Thank you.
Okay.
Next hand is Roberta. Go ahead and unmute, Roberta.
Okay, bye bye. Hi. Hi, this is Roberta. Thank you so much for letting me participate. I think you guys are great. I've really enjoyed being part of this and hearing what you have to say. I agree with the last speaker. I think that we should ask even those questions that we're pretty sure District Attorney Fregoli will not answer. And the reason I feel this way is not necessarily to put her on the spot, but I do think that she should, you know, she should hear what we have, what what we feel is missing and what we're upset about. And by voicing these questions in public, I think it gives the public an idea of what we feel is missing. And, you know, as far as putting her on the spot goes, it is okay, I believe, to do that in a respectful way whereby she has to say, I'm not going to answer that. Because that holds her accountable in front of the public as well. And that's important to me. And again, without slamming her or making her feel miserable, I think we do have to voice these questions. They're extremely important. And if we do get answers, as Bruce said, we can then use some of that input to help us, you know, fashion our ordinances or whatever our response is going to be. Any kind of information we can get from her is valuable and we should try to get it if we can. I do have some specific questions that I would like to ask her and I'll read them to you here. Is DA Fregoli's decision regarding charges contingent upon the property owner's decision to press charges? Or can she press charges of her own accord? I think that's important. Number two, California Penal Code 11411 provides a pretty low bar for conviction. The perpetrator need only act, quote, in reckless disregard of the risk of terrorizing the owner or occupant of that private property, close quote. How can the DA claim that this condition for condition how this condition for conviction has not been met? It's a very low bar and it's very specific. He only has to act in reckless disregard of the risk. And lastly, number three, why is such deference being shown to the adult perpetrator that the DA will not even name him? He's not a minor, he's adult. And so these questions could lead to, she may not answer them directly. I mean, she may have a reason why she doesn't want to name him, but I think they will lead to her having to reveal a little bit more about herself and her thinking. And that could yield some input for us in order to fashion our response. So those are my thoughts. And thank you very much for all your input. I agree with everybody and I'm very glad to be part of this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So on to Joe. Joe, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you. Yeah, it's good to see you all. And yeah, thank you so much for the the discussion tonight and and in in particular, what what Alexandra said really resonated with me and you know, I'm a white man and I'm and I'm not Jewish, so no way am I going to try and center myself here. And but I do have some thoughts about the the performative piece and and the district attorney his office. And I just want, everybody needs to be aware that that this, it's a political office and and there's a lot of politics involved with that. And the district attorney has, you know, time and time again, you know, not pursued. We have the the case with Yama, her choosing to go after the indigenous Peoples' Day five. Her office has a troubling track record. And and rather than, and there and there's two places that she lives, the courtroom where where her office acts in one way. And then she tries to clean it up by by having meetings and sitting in committees and and I, you know, I worry about, I I see you folks as a group of activists. You're 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 you know, within you know, a town government function, a committee there, but but at your core, I see you as activists. And and sometimes, you know, sitting at the table with establishment isn't isn't the best move. And I I look at what, how powerful what ICE out of Marin and Latinos Unidos de Marin did with the sheriff's Truth Act Forum and and boycotting that and sending a letter stating why they boycotted that. And and maybe that's a route to take because the the district attorney won by 400, 500 votes and and it's it's unusual for her to be challenged, for for that office to be challenged. And I think she knows she's going to be challenged. And so just be very aware that this this could very well be just another political piece that that the district attorney's office, Lori Fregoli, is taking on. And and maybe, you know, the ResJ doesn't need to be a part of it. Thank you for all your work.
Okay, great. Thank you. Jess is next. Jess, go ahead and unmute yourself. Go ahead, Jess.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, my thing prompts me after you unmute me that it's unmuted again and I have to type in my password. Sorry about that. So I was saying thank you to everyone here for all of your time and energy commitment. And I'm so grateful that you're doing this work and that this committee exists. And I agree with so much of everything that has already been said. Sorry, there's some noise coming in on my laptop. And I really, I don't, I won't repeat what others have said, but I agree with pretty much everything that has come up tonight thus far. And probably because it's fresh in my mind, I also echo and agree with what Roberta shared about, you know, asking the DA and having her on the spot and hopefully getting some insight from that and having that level, having some kind of accountability for her in that moment in terms of what she hasn't done. And also what Joe said, I think, is really important to keep in mind that this may be a political maneuver. It probably is on some level. I don't personally think it means we shouldn't be part of it, but I think it means being mindful and savvy about that and strategic about how we approach what we're doing and the content of it and how the ResJ approaches it and 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 think it's really relevant what Alexandra you said earlier. In addition to that, I I want to just note that you know, one of the questions I would add to ask the DA is noting all these other incidents that have happened. Some of you may have heard about there was yet more incidents, one in Bolinas in the post office with swastikas hanging from the ceiling. A couple of other things have been happening, Redwood High. And, you know, as these incidents tend are escalating, after her decision that failed to have accountability or any kind of process after that, what does she say to that? How does she recommend we address that and make sure we're safe and protect ourselves? So asking that question of the DA. I'm thinking on the broader term of this is, this second question I have is one for all of us, if we're going to create an ordinance that we can explore more in depth later. But as these incidents happen and the people that are on the other end, if you've ever experienced anything like this, and I'm guessing most people here have experienced something where this is, we were talking about everyone's had experience with trauma. In these situations, there seems to be no protocol for what to do with the loose ends and missed opportunities. Like, these are missed opportunities to sort of resolve something or address something. And how do we then create a safety net where things are just falling through instead? How do we weave that safety net tighter so that we're holding each other in community? And this is a big, broad question for another time that may not be at all addressed in this community.
You're at three minutes.
Okay, and just want to say last thing is most frustrated by that missed opportunity of the lack of restorative justice because she failed to prosecute and that want that to be brought up there as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and Stephanie, we don't go, if people still have their hands up, we if if they have
haven't put their hand down yet. Okay, I'm not seeing any more. Um, so we just have a few more minutes. That was really valuable. Thank you to all the members of the public who just spoke. Yeah. I have a lot captured here. I'm just trying to think how I can synthesize next steps here. I know that I can capture feedback in terms of, you know, trends we heard this evening. But what I'm not entirely sure about But what I'm not entirely sure about is how we could, if we wanted to develop a statement, you know, how we do that in advance of the forum. So that's one question I have. We have. Yeah, I mean, even our next meeting is after the event, the evening of the same day of the event. Veronica.
I'm just wondering, is it within the transparency and legality of the Brown Act to be doing it via email? We need to be doing it in in front of the public if we're going to be issuing a statement. Is that correct?
Well, I think you could develop it, but to like approve it, you know.
Could we develop it by Monday morning, for instance?
Pardon me?
Could we develop it by Monday morning, for instance, as a committee and to get it out to the public within 24 hours? I don't know. You all know that maybe.
Well, we would all have to convene is my point and vote to approve it.
What we may be able to do is tonight, and we don't have much time. But if tonight we can summarize a couple of the main points that we've come up with tonight. That and then if Alexandra is is interested in representing us and can just carry those points, Alexandra can spend some time thinking for herself about how to word those points. But as long as she understands what they are, that might be a possibility. We can just, without doing the wordsmithing, just come up with a short list of what we'd like.
Like the key areas of concern or that we want that we wanted to be addressed.
Like, for example, I heard earlier that this that this affects everybody. It's not only affecting Jewish people, but it's affecting everybody here. So that was something that maybe Alexandra could carry to the to the forum. And that we're interested in knowing what we, what could be done in terms of a possible ordinance or what what the DA could could recommend in that regard, that might be another question. So those types of just high-level questions.
OK, so as far as isolating a statement or key, you know, what do I just say? Key items, you know, related to the incident itself. Because I think the ordinance is more of an action item, like where do we go from here, right? But the key areas of, like, the ResJ, we spoke about this from ResJ. We collected input from the public and this is what we heard. Right? I like that, Bruce. We heard this affects everyone. We heard we, we want more transparency about your decision-making process and why you couldn't prosecute. And I like a lot of what Roberta said related to that. Just adding more specificity. I'll write this up for you, Alexandra. The restorative justice was loud and clear.
I'd I'd also like to know what more the DA needs in order to prosecute a case like this. What were we missing? If we've got video, if we've got evidence of a crime, what more do we need? Because this is going to happen again.
Right, exactly.
Rizelda is waiting to speak.
I'm sorry, Rizelda. Please speak.
I want to make sure that Alexandra feels comfortable because she earlier said she needed clarity about whether she was representing the ResJ. And want to make sure that 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 that's OK. I really think the DA needs to be pushed on clarity. And I understand that there may be restrictions about discussing the case. However, she can paint a picture. She can clarify without discussing the case, like Patrice was saying, you know, just, just what would it have taken? Give me examples, what, you know, somehow that we can understand when what the thinking process is. Because we'll need that to create an ordinance also. But also, I mean, this is her job. She's she's responsible to us. So those are, those were my thoughts.
Thank you. Did you want to answer that, Alexandra? Like, is this still something you're up for and don't feel like? Because I can just summarize this in an email for her and you don't don't feel like you have to be like the spokesperson.
Yeah, I think more my my point in saying that was that you all are OK with me speaking on behalf of all of you. So like, if we get a vote or just, that works too. I'm totally comfortable. I can, I think I can re-watch this meeting, correct? And
Yeah.
There are some information that way. So, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it to you. And are you comfortable sharing that with you?
Yeah, Alexandra, the the process of getting the video, the turnaround of the video is a little, there's a little bit of a lag time. But I will work with the person to get it to you by, you need it by Tuesday, right?
Is that when?
Thursday is when the forum is.
Thursday, OK.
Time to look at it, yeah.
Yes, it it should be turned around by then. Yes.
OK, thank you.
Yes, you are a rock star. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, Ty you.
Sorry, I just, I would love to know what the DA's record is for prosecuting hate crimes.
Thank you.
From what what Joe said, it sounds like she doesn't. And I think that's an important first step because that might answer all of our questions of why she didn't prosecute.
I did ask her that earlier today and she, I'll put that in writing again, she plans to share that. She said that there hasn't been one in a couple of years. I guess there was a fire set.
But what was the Redwood, the Instagram account at Redwood was a blatant hate crime.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, again, this is like, help me, help you, like, help us understand, like, what is it that you need to, right? To prosecute.
And like Amal said, somebody needs to get hurt physically before it.
We or we need better laws.
Yeah.
Lady.
Hi, thank you. I also really like what one of the members of the public said about. And this kind of goes to the, and I'll get to, I'll circle back to the about. It goes to the idea of kind of putting the DA on notice that people are watching, that we are watching, that other organizations are watching. And that, you know, the idea that there have been subsequent incidents, you know, and 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 how does she account for? I mean, and I think that would be a great question for somebody like Alexandra to pose to her, you know, in an open forum, which is, what about all of these things that happen? Do you, I mean, we talk about law enforcement and prosecutions and prosecution is anathema to me. So this is hard for me to say this, but they talk about the deterrent quality of these things. And now, you know, here is an example of an incident that that has rocked a community that you have elected not to prosecute, that you have chosen not to include the community in your decision-making on this. So that's a lack of sensitivity, at least to the community's needs. I don't think the DA should always explain all their decisions, but this might be an instance of one where they should. Furthermore, we see that other things have happened afterwards, which is, you know, the kind of usually people on the law enforcement side are pointing to these events as reasons for why we should come down harder and crack down on things. So what about this? That's that's good for me.
Thank you so much.
We do wrap up so that we can.
We've got another subcommittee meeting starting in seven minutes, so we should probably wrap up in like the next three so people can grab.
And then what would happen is that everybody who's not on the PPPSA subcommittee needs to leave this call. But you can sign back on using the public link for the PPPSA.
Hopefully you can get it.
What we have to do.
Some of you can get a bio break. Go ahead, Veronica.
Just wanted to say, Alexandra, I'm very happy to connect with you ahead of time. And I still plan to participate in the meeting. And we'll just, to the extent that you don't feel like you have to hold everything on your shoulders that this committee and the members of the public have asked us to bring up, I want to let you take on what you feel up for and just to let you know you're not alone.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I took a lot of notes this evening. So I will, so what I captured as far as what for, I'm sorry, for Alexandra would be the key areas and for the ice, for the, for the event itself, right? Is this affects everyone? We want more transparency, push on clarity. We, we need this for the ordinance as well, like what more do you need? And the restorative justice piece. And then share her record on prosecuting, which I already had asked her about. And then Laili's last point that she just shared that we were watching. And the mention of the subsequent events in Bolinas and at Redwood and that she's elected not to prosecute, which could be a deterrent and the the lack of sensitivity around the lack of transparency. Anything else?
Man, make one last comment.
Please.
You know, it is wonderful what we're doing, but it reminds me that I wish that our community could get as upset about women who are strangled and beaten and their offenders do not get prosecuted.
Amen. Is there anyone that doesn't think we should, we as a council, we, in partnership with the DA and our city attorney and so forth, should pursue a local ordinance? And we can talk about this at the ResJ meeting, but. OK. Thank you all so very much for your time this evening on such short notice. I really appreciate it and to the public for joining us this evening as well. Have a good night.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Stephanie.